How you doing, buddy? Yes, yes.
Good evening and welcome to the August 21st, 2023 meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for all terms of participation in order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to staff were forwarded to the commission directly. At this time, I'd like to introduce our staff. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. Michael Garner, Civil Engineer. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. Emily Hayes, Associate Director of Planning. Mike Duncan, Technical Support Specialist. Tyler Smalley, Special Projects Coordinator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who are appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask the commission members to introduce themselves and state their occupation. Again, Ms. Hornsby.
Anne Hornsby, Attorney.
Raven Howard, Councilwoman, District Two.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Dana Prince, Attorney.
Lynn Stewley, Design Coordinator, UA.
Tiam Harrison, General Contract. Bill Wright, Business Owner.
There are sign-up sheets outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have the maximum of five minutes unless the commission allows a longer time. Procedures tonight: The commission will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same properties, such as anexation and a rezoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present the case. The petitioner will have a maximum of ten minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, we'll then call on any other party in order of sign up or the one who opposes the petition, and then call those who are in favor of the petition. When in short term for comment, please introduce yourself, stating your name and address for the record. And all comments should be directed to the commission. Any written comments, again, have been included to the record. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your allowed time. Once the commission members are satisfied they have received all relevant information, we'll then call to close further discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you're free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person and public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually are video recorded through the conferencing application. Please, again, first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction: In all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and its planning jurisdiction, and as to amendments, planned unit developments, and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decision is subject to appeal to the City Council. As to all remaining agenda matters, including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacation, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approval requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. Do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any matter before us tonight? If so, please state for the record. Have you heard none? I would ask staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Thank you. With that, we'll begin with approval of minutes. As the Planning and Zoning Commission has received the synopsis of the July 2023 meeting, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those note? Minutes are approved. Okay. We will address the consent agenda first. Commission, before us, we have three items, S-5323, S-5523, and S-6223 on the consent agenda. Have a motion to approve those consent agenda items. Motion approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent agenda is approved. Okay. We have a few cases to withdraw request. We have S-5923, Washington Oaks. Would the representative please come forward?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, Tuscaloosa. The client was, the city requested that we install a fire hydrant, and that's just not in her budget, so we need to withdraw it.
Withdraw, okay. All right. Mission, before us, have a withdrawal request for S-5923. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, withdraw. Okay, Z-1923, Mr. Cabis.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cabis with Cabis Engineering, representing Clay Smith. Clay's the owner developer of this, or the purchaser developer. He's been going through his development cost numbers, and normally financial decisions aren't part of your approval process, but they are the reason for the withdrawal. He's development cost, land cost, all in with this layout. He's pretty much breaking even, so we're just going to withdraw this plat. And if we do come back with this property, it would be a different layout.
Thank you. Mission, before us, have a withdrawal request for Z-19? Is he going to sign up for that?
Yeah, I do something. Yes.
Okay. Commission, we have a withdrawal request for Z-1923. All of the fair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we have now withdrawal request for S-6523 Summit Grove. We do, however, have a few people have signed up to speak about that. We will allow you, since you did make the effort to be here, to make your comments for the record. So, who is representing 6523 Summit Grove? Staff, we know who should be here?
It's Mr. Cabis.
Mr. Cabis?
Hi.
Well, I didn't realize it was one of the same case.
Okay.
So, your question Summit Grove?
So, this is for the zoning then, or the subdivision?
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me, we do want to hear from those who have signed up.
Yeah, it was chairman out of.
Brianna Bolton. You want to speak?
Brianna Bolton, I live down 1810 21st Avenue East. There are a couple of mated pairs of barred owls that live on that property, and that would be destroying their habitat, so I would not like to see this, whatever this is called, come to fruition.
Have you spoken with the developer?
I have not.
Maybe Mr. Cabis can help you reach out to him and just have a conversation. Always, it's always helpful to have a conversation with.
I mean, we, none of us knew this was even happening until like a week ago, so.
Sure. Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign up is Barry McKenzie.
That's it. Okay. Mission, before us, we have withdrawal request for S-6523 Summit Grove. All of the fair say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it.
Good evening, Commission. We do have one continued case from last month continuing on until October. That is Z-1623. Starting with Unfinished Business, we have one preliminary plat from last month. That's S-3623 Foster House. This is consisting of two residential lots on approximately .32 acres, and it's located at 625 Queen City Avenue. This is in Council District Four. Here's the vicinity map. It's right there at the corner of Queen City and Seventh Street. Here's an aerial overview. The prime residence faces Queen City. And here's a copy of the plat with contours and without. Again, this sits as one lot today. They're requesting to split it into two. And then last month, you all asked for a rendering or a site plan showing what that square footage could look like in the buildable area. They are showing 1,800 square feet of buildable space. And they're requesting a variance tonight from additional right-of-way along Seventh Street. Do you have any questions for staff?
Do we have any site pictures on this?
I don't have them included, but we can always pull up street view.
Think that'd be helpful, just to get a visual, street level?
Yep. I do have it pulled up already on the other computer for street view, so. Okay. All right.
Any questions for staff before we, are you going to try to pull those up? Thank you. Petitioner, we'll hear from you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Bill Griffith, live at 20 Autobahn Place in Tuscaloosa. It's the adjacent property to those lots that are on the screen. And again, we are petitioning to basically divide that lot into two residential lots at this time. One containing the Foster House as it exists today, the second being a buildable lot, albeit very small lot that we could utilize in the future, should we choose. If I could just add just a bit of, I guess, texture to this, again, purchase this property primarily to protect the neighborhood, and asking for this subdivision to form two lots of smaller size that simply would not allow, you know, a larger multifamily or multiplex type structure to be, to be built on that, which would, again, preserve the nature of the current neighborhood.
So, you're a purchaser of the Foster House, right? You're one of the owners?
Yes.
And you're the house behind it?
Directly behind it, yes.
Who owns the house on the corner?
I'm sorry?
Who's the house on the corner?
On the corner? That's the Foster home. That is the Foster home, yeah. And now, today, that is the entire span of the one lot that's in existence, back to where you see the, where you see the wood fence.
We've met, we talked last time about this. My understanding was this lot is very small, very narrow, and the buildable area on this lot is.
The buildable area on the lot, again, I think we had that up, is around 1,800 square feet.
It says 1,800 square feet. It'd be tough to put 1,800 square foot on that, obviously.
Yeah.
My biggest concern with it was that any, I'd like to know what thoughts or what you could build on this, and if what you would have to build, would it be in keeping with the neighborhood, current neighborhood, because of the, it's very narrow, very long and very narrow? And I don't see anything in that, in that area that fits that, fits that aesthetic look. And I think that's what, from the historic district, that's the biggest thing that everybody in the historic wants, is things, if you're going to build something, be in keeping with the neighborhood. In my opinion, this couldn't be because of the size of the lot.
Okay. Well, I would, again, I'm not sure that we will ever build on that lot. However, if we do, it would be in compliance with all of the historic district requirements. I mean, that's, that is our sole intent, again, on the purchase of the property.
We appreciate that, and we understand your desire. Obviously, our decision here lives on beyond you, unless it's changed. Beyond, it could potentially live beyond you, where we'd fall with another home. I question the, right now, I mean, since it's yours, it couldn't be built unless you wanted to, correct?
Our intent is to sell the Foster property, the home, and in making it two lots will prevent having enough parking, as well as that additional space for the, the next owner of that property to build into a multiplex or multifamily.
So, your intent is to sell?
Is to sell the Foster home, which would be on, let's just say, Lot A, which would be the, you know, obviously, the larger lot with the home on it. Lot B would be the smaller lot, which would be basically where you can see the, there's a structure, if you kind of pan back around, yeah, that's it, which is just basically a storage building that's in, behind the, behind the property, so.
And anything built on Lot B would have, would be subject to the design guidelines by that, of the.
Absolutely.
Preservation Commission. It would have to be approved by them in advance before we need any construction. So, there is that.
Absolutely.
Added layer of protection, and the design guidelines would keep anything from out of scale or not in keeping with the neighborhood.
Correct.
And being constructed. Staff, what would be the, I know it's here somewhere, where would be the size, the square footage of the lot that, that would be split off there? What's, what's Lot Two size, 7,500? Am I reading that right?
No, no, it would be less than 1,800.
No, not like the entire lot size.
Lot Two is going to be 7,507 square feet.
And how's that line up with the other lots in the historic district?
Well, we look at an aerial, you can kind of see the Queen City Avenue facing lots, and how they're typically deeper lots like this.
But total square footage of that?
So, you can see, yeah, there, there's that lot, and then adjacent to it, adjacent to that, adjacent to that.
Rather larger lots around it. My question is back to, like, you have some smaller lots in, in, in the historic district. How do, how would this change be in keeping with the lot sizes in other parts of the historic district?
So, each historic district is different, so you really kind of look at the general area that, that it, that it is. And so, again, if we look at that aerial, you can see, really, all the lots that exist today along Queen City are these long, deep lots with larger backyards. And then along Seventh Street, those houses right there, Mr. Griffith's house with the pool, all of those are facing Autobahn, up until, I think, I'm not exactly sure, maybe the one to the left of that larger backyard. So, yeah, I mean, it's, those are kind of the things that the Historic Preservation Commission would look at, and what you guys could base your decision off of tonight as well.
So, those lots are facing the cul-de-sac, and the one adjacent to it would be facing Seventh Street?
I believe the one where her hand is now, right there, that, I think, I think Ms. Fitz owns that, Mr. and Mrs. Fitz owns that, and what I believe occurred was it faces Autobahn, which is that, right there, that cul-de-sac, and it also has been updated to where, like, it's basically a fourplex, I think, with two units facing Seventh Street and two facing Autobahn. But all the rest, I believe, are rear-facing on Seventh Street. So, I'm saying all that to say, with the historic character district, that within keeping of the character of the historic district, if some house was facing off of the north side of Seventh Street, facing Seventh Street, wouldn't necessarily be in conformance with that character of the district, at least in this general area.
Zach, you said it wouldn't?
I, that would be for the HPC ultimately to decide, but, and what you guys can take into consideration, but it is differing from what kind of currently exists there.
Zach, are all the, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering why this is R4? I mean, has it, is all this area R4?
Bring up the zoning map of that area. Color zoning map.
Let's get the zoning map up. But, yeah, these smaller lots, and you see a lot in the historic districts because they are smaller lots, smaller lots, that they are zoned R3, R2, R4.
So, that smaller houses can be built?
Yeah, exactly. Or the, the smaller houses that exist prior to zoning conform to the zoning that they currently fall under.
Okay. I mean, it would just seem like to me that a, a zoning change would protect it more than anything else. I mean, maybe your, your purchaser does not want to purchase a piece of R1 property, and, and I don't know if there's any R1 around it that would, you know, make it congruous, but I don't know, I'm just, I think zoning. They're not, but I'm, what I'm saying is, for, for, you know, the way I look at things, zoning laws are much more protective sometimes than subdivision regulations. So, I was just seeing if there was another way to accomplish what you want to accomplish, but your purchaser may want the R4 zoning on the Foster House lot.
They could possibly, we don't have a purchaser in mind at this time.
What if the purchaser of the Foster House wanted to have the land, additional land for outdoor, you know, living or something of that nature? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out why would you want to divide it off now, and just trying to protect it, but if I'm a buyer of the property, I want as much land as I can get. And then that area, I mean, it's a nice, could be a nice house, and it's like the, the back, the back portion of that lot could really be a special, you know, special place. Almost kind of like what Mr. Murdoch did a few doors down when that house caught fire. He went there and bought the lot and kind of green-spaced it. I mean, we're always talking about, you know, saving trees and, in the historic district and, and green space, and it seems like you're opening up to be built on and not to protect it. I mean, why won't you let the buyer of the Foster House make that determination if they want to do this or not? Why, why do we do this now?
Well, again, no different than what, what your question was to me. If we sell it to one person and they have an intent to use the whole lot, that's one thing. However, they could turn around and sell it again, and the next person may not want to have the whole lot for that. They may want to come back and try to build on it. I happen to live in the home right next door, and as you saw, I have a pool. I would prefer not to have a three-story building next door to me overlooking my pool. I mean, that's the, if you want to get down to it, if we control the lot and control the building, then we control the size of the building that goes on it. And again, we would keep it within all the zoning requirements for, that the commission has in place today, as, and that's including setbacks and parking requirements or anything of that nature, as well as we would have to meet any of the requirements of the historic district as well. And that was our, that was our intent.
If I, if I could, I think, Bill, some of the concern is that if you, if you made the Foster House a B and B, or we can, short-term rental, you could use that for parking and wind up, you would need that, you could use that space for something that, an owner could use that space for something that the neighborhood would not.
Absolutely. I mean, if you, if you have the, the Foster House and the entire second lot that we're talking about, that would be great if they just wanted to use that for their own personal space. However, if that, that intent ever changed with the R4 zoning, as well as the additional space, you would have enough room for parking, and you could really add on to the Foster House, or do whatever you needed to do to make a multi-unit, multifamily type housing.
Staff, is there, like, it was brought up then about making an Airbnb and parking. Could, how, what's the process that they want to, it's my, just in that scenario, I bought an Airbnb and I want to park it back. What's the city's, how do you handle that from a city standpoint?
So, ZBA for the short-term rental approval. So, you know, the neighbors would obviously have, be noticed and have say as a public hearing, but we do have regulations in the Historic Preservation Guidelines stating how, how much of your backyard can be used towards parking and things of that nature. And so, there are regulations in place to deter someone, and essentially, that's why those are there, is because people buying student, buying houses to just pave the backyard and use it for, for parking. So, we do have regulations in place that kind of restrict that. So, the process would be if someone wanted to come in here and make a parking, basically a parking lot or a driveway or parking area, they would have to go to the Historic Preservation Commission for approval on that as well, which is a public hearing.
If they were to use more than a third of it?
I think it's 25%.
I mean, you got, here's where I kind of land, in a way, is this is, to me, this is the center of the historic district. And the people that are supportive of this, I'm kind of shaking my head a little, because usually if they're against this type of petition.
This is the first time I've been here.
Well, I'm just saying, historically, a lot of us have been there for many years, and anytime we start talking about historic district, we usually get a outflowing of people that are against it. And you get your TNT, everybody comes out against things like this, or.
Right.
I, I'm just kind of surprised that those who are in support of it are so in support of, when, again, this, to me, this is the heart of the historic area, and it just, I don't know, I just struggle with it a little bit, the standpoint of the chance of having something built there, when we don't want to build anything there. I mean, I think there's ways to protect that piece of land without dividing it off and then there being a house one day. That's just my, that's just where I kind of.
I agree with Bill. I mean, it surprised me that, that we're having this conversation, and there's not a lot of opposition on this, because typically, anytime we, in the past, had something that is obviously not in keeping with the neighborhood, and that's a big, big thing that we see here from the size of the lot, that, and, and the, and the orientation of the lot, and the potential where you'd have to base this building, and it's going against the adjacent neighbors, that we would have a lot of opposition against it, so.
My name's Evans Fitz. I want to join the conversation. I'm, I'm one of the partners in this endeavor. First off, I'll make the point that, that Zach brought up about the, the houses that face Seventh Street there. There's, if we could bring that map back up, there, there's a lot of houses that face Seventh Street right there. So, having a house on that lot that faces Seventh Street is not unusual, that that's, I mean, on the right, you see there's four or five houses, and on the left, he mentioned those two apartment buildings that I own. Those are quads, they both, they face both Autobahn and Seventh Street, yeah, right, right there. So, there is a precedent, that's a backyard, and that's a backyard. But there is precedent for houses opening onto Seventh Street. Now, the, the main point is that we're trying to get a, this lot, this house property came up for sale, and we want to get ahead of the curve. You know, people are developing rental property on any postage stamp they can find. It's kind of unbelievable what, 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 what's going on. So, we wanted to get ahead of this. Somebody was going to, fearful somebody would buy it, and, again, working within the existing zoning, add on to the house, not only would they ruin the house, I, I would think, but it's, it's just introducing probably students that really is not congruent to, to, to our neighborhood. We're trying to get ahead of this by, 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 by buying the property and splitting it like this. This is a large, I've always thought of those lots along Queen City as being quite large and deep, really kind of too, too big for the, the house, well, the house sits close to the street. You know, I see your point about the lot being undersized for most of the existing properties, and if any house, any structure that gets built there would be relatively small. And that's really not the reason we're, we've done this. That's, a, a, a structure may never be built. But again, we're trying to get ahead of, ahead of this, this property being developed in a way that's, that we're not happy with.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was late. Last month, I just recalled that they were subdividing so nothing would be built, is that right? But, but something can be built as long as it's a conforming lot, so you can build a house on it.
Right.
But your intent is to build a house or?
Right now, we have no immediate plans to build anything on it. But we're not, we're not going to commit to anything right now. But our interest in buying this is not so we can build a house and get rent money out of it. We're not, we're not trying to pull a fast one on anybody.
So, but you're subdividing the lot and you have another conforming lot that's selling, that's certainly selling.
But we would sell the existing house and hopefully somebody would renovate it and move into it.
I'm not sure about, so when you say you're worried about somebody adding on, don't plans have to be approved? And the plans have to be in keeping architecturally? Or does someone added on to this foster home, they would have to hire someone like you and you'd have to design a structure that would be in keeping.
They still have to meet HBC review and that kind of thing. But again, it's a multi-family, it becomes a multi-family structure.
Is it zoned multi-family?
Pardon?
Is it zoned?
It's zoned R four.
So you can build, you can build a, so you can build an apartment?
Yeah, as long as you can park it, it can be more than a duplex. It can be multiple units.
You're saying that you're going to subdivide so that no one can do that?
Right.
But if your intentions weren't, but you're not denying the fact you may want to build or sell it to someone that may.
Are you talking about on the new lot?
The back lot.
The smaller lot?
The back lot. I mean, in other words, if you.
At this point, we don't know.
That's not what was said last month. Last month, it was presented to us in a way that this is being done to make sure nothing is ever built. And that's not what I'm hearing you say. You're saying we're reserving that right, we don't have that intent right now. But we're certainly reserving that right either for us or for some future buyers. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Fair.
I guess, Mr. Fitz, from our standpoint, and you got to look at our shoes. I mean, our track record is to try to work with HBC and follow it and try to help protect historic homes there. And to me, what we're doing here goes against what we historically set a precedent on trying to do. And this commission pretty much stands on precedent unless we clearly made mistakes. I mean, this is just, it just doesn't, it doesn't favor the, by subdividing this, it does not favor the ability to build a house that's in keeping. I know that.
You know, you don't know that. You think it won't fit, the size of it, you know, you don't know that.
I do know what our precedence is. I know that.
You're putting.
Our decision obviously has potentially transcends your ownership. That's the way we look at it.
Well, sure.
I see, Mr. Vice Chairman, I see them five foot under the building lines, but I can't tell how big the building envelope actually is. I see it's seventy-five, it says seventy-five hundred square feet. Is that the size?
One of their, go to the next lot. I think one of the slides shows approximately eighteen hundred square feet. Did I see that?
You did.
Okay, so the house could be up to twenty-six feet deep and twenty-five feet long, is that right?
Staff, where do we land on?
I'm going to disagree with our esteemed leadership on this one. Having, excuse me, lived in the historic district for many years and been on the commission for six or so before I moved to this. I don't, I don't think that this lot is out of keeping with other small lots in the historic district. I live on Alaka Place where the lots are extremely small. But, and I also know that there is a demand for smaller homes in the area as well. For people who would like to live in the downtown area, who'd be willing to take on the obligations of designing something that would fit in, if there were ever anything built there. I mean, it's not a very, it's not, that isn't really conducive to building a home on. But if somebody were to come up with a duplex or something that they wanted to do that was in keeping.
Well, it's certainly legal to build on a conforming lot. You can't stop somebody from building on a lot whatever they can build legally. I mean, that's just, that's just a fact.
Can't keep them from building on it? No.
No, no, that's a fact. My question is, is last month, if we hadn't extended this case, we would have voted.
I wasn't here last month.
We would have voted on this case under the impression that this lot was being subdivided, so it would never be built on. And now, now that story has changed. So I'm just wondering what changed because we did decide to extend it because you weren't here last month.
That's correct.
We wanted to hear from you, and I'm glad we did.
Now, we listened to the tape.
But the engineer that represented you said that you wanted to make sure.
We listened to the tape last night. I don't think anybody, there was no commitment made as to what was going to happen.
What was y'all's impression?
I'm sorry, I'm getting a little confused by what the zoning commission is really looking at. Are we talking about the historic district? Or are we talking about, does this lot meet the requirements for having a lot within that space? I don't, I thought it met those requirements. Again, our sole intent was to protect the neighborhood.
Well, your partner brought up, your partner brought up the historic.
I don't really understand what the, all of what the intent, if this meets it and the historic district protects the historic district, I don't understand why this committee is looking at it on how does it, how does it protect or not protect?
You're speaking out of both sides of your mouth.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, I'm not finished.
Well, your partner's just got through saying the reason he was subdividing is he was fearful that this house may be added on to and not in keeping with the historical nature of the home.
Correct. Well, that's our intent was to protect.
Or in keeping, design wise, but in a way that would allow multi-family.
Why would we not consider rezoning to R one, the whole lot? So the whole property.
We were advised not to go that way.
Well, the house that exists currently is actually a multi-family, it's a multi, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it has multiple units in it.
At one point in time, that home did have multiple units. Later, I guess, or more recently, they had taken some of the partitions out. But you could still see that they had multiple kitchens and multiple, you know, there's like four kitchens in there.
Yeah, if it was zoned, rezoned to R one, when they sell that home, they wouldn't be able to use it as a multi-family property.
But that's also gives the neighbors more protection.
So that is an option if that's.
I mean, R one's the most restrictive we have, so.
But it would keep them from using the house as it is.
It's right now, it's not a multi-family right now, what I'm hearing.
It sounds like they've, they've changed it back to a single family.
A single family. That way you could keep it a single family and keep it out of the multi-family world, which I thought historic district was really high on.
If it.
Well, not if you want your grandmother.
I mean.
That's not against the law.
Yeah, I know. And she might want her own kitchen.
That's not against the law either. You can have two kitchens, you can have two kitchens in any home.
Any more questions for, anyone sign up for this? No one signed up? Are there any more questions or any more comments that you'd like to make to this commission? Or any questions of the commission members to these officials?
I like Mr. Wright's idea. If it was all R one, it not only protects this property, but it protects the property with a home on it. I thought that's what the historic district wanted was protection. So this does both things, splits a lot and gives you protection both on both pieces of property.
Say that again, Mr. Pig.
If you rezone the whole lot R one, the home that's built there now would be protected for the historic district and this property would be protected in the future. So it does the same thing, splits a lot and protects both pieces of property.
They'd have to come back and ask for rezoning on it. If they go R one and come back for any other rezoning, they want to split it off at some later date.
We're trying to protect the property, that protects the property.
I'm not sure it's our job to protect the property.
No, they weren't.
For the split, from the split, in terms of how, in terms of what's built there in the future, is that for the owners in the historic preservation?
We need to keep in mind the lot size as well. So this lot two is being shown as seventy-five oh five square feet. So if they ever did go through, rezone to R one and then split, they would not be conforming with lot standards for R one or R two. However, this does meet R three and R four.
If it went to R one, if it's a non-conforming lot.
So you, so can you put, could you park this? I don't guess they have the regulations parked in the rear, but can you, can you put a parking? Can you get a driveway? I see they're nine foot, can you get a, can you get the drive in there? And would that be able to go to the house? Can you get, can you get a car to the rear? I guess you could make the house twenty, twenty feet.
I don't think you can get a car to the rear because of the residence. That's not understanding.
Do you look at the Queen City view?
That'd be tough on a fire truck.
Yeah, I mean, others.
Yeah, where would you, you also.
You can't see the front of the house.
Where would you park something there? Because you got.
There's a driveway on the left side of the foster home there.
That accesses that lot.
Accesses Queen City and then it, but yeah, you could go all the way back to the.
So y'all would give them potential cross access easement to that back lot?
Well, we have another, I mean, you could put one driveway in, if there were two lots, if there were two lots created, there's room for one driveway.
That has to be agreed upon, that has to be agreed upon now, to have it on the flat, to have it have access to that lot for parking.
That, that, that's your access where the main is?
That's the access for the main home there in that lot, not for the second lot. The second lot would be accessed from Seventh Street.
Only from Seventh.
Only from Seventh Street.
But you see, I'm saying, there's not really an access point off of Seventh to that lot two that's created, right?
Not, not today.
So my question was, are you going to allow, if this happens, you're going to allow owner of lot two to have access through that piece of property to get to park a car? You'd have to, I mean.
Well, I can't say that because our intent is to sell that home that would have that driveway.
What about from a parking standpoint on lot two? What's the requirement?
Two off-street parking spaces for residents.
Two off-street?
Yeah, if it's a single family home. If it's anything more than that, it's two per unit, I believe. I'd have to look.
I'm just trying.
That's a yellow curb, isn't it?
I think it's unlikely anything's ever going to be built.
Right, because you wouldn't.
I mean, I.
Unless it's a small, two apartments kind of complex or something like that. But I agree that it's unlikely anything's ever going to be built there. But if it is, it would have to be.
Why do you, why do you think it's unlikely?
Why do I think it's unlikely?
Yeah.
Because I don't think you could, I think it'd be very hard to design something desirable, small enough that would accommodate people and still meet the design guidelines and all the other regulations, the parking and everything else. Maybe somebody will turn it into a green space.
Hey, Zach.
Or a neighborhood garden like we did the lot behind us.
May I ask a question? Okay, if they didn't, if they had not asked for the waiver for additional right of way on Seventh Street, this would have gone on the consent agenda, correct?
It would, yes ma'am.
Okay, this is just my opinion. But I, in my head, I am separating out the subdivision regulations from the historic district. I mean, I know that our aim is, when possible, to do whatever we can to protect historic districts, and I am all for that. I think the reason we don't have anybody here objecting is because in their minds, and in my mind, this is a way to protect the historic district. So I think that's why TNT isn't here or anybody else from the surrounding area. So I feel comfortable because it does conform, you know, to be in agreement with it. But that's, I mean, I'm just, I'm just one person, so.
So is the only variance the waiver?
Only waiver, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Explain, can you, can you explain the waiver, Mr. Chairman? I didn't, I obviously, so.
Yeah, they're asking for a variance from right of way dedication. You can see on Fourth or on Seventh Street, they're not meeting it. And we're not, I mean, engineering is okay with that request.
But they said you had to have, you said you had to have off-street parking?
Whatever they bill where, they just have two off-street parking spaces per unit.
Isn't it a yellow curb? I mean.
Yellow curb just means you can't park on the street right there. This is a one-way street, it's very narrow. They always want to be one-way. So the reason that we agreed to the variance for right of way dedication is, I just don't believe we would ever require anyone right of way, you know, through this historic district and widen it. It would make no sense to ask for additional right of way to basically, you know.
But you've done it before. I mean, you've asked for additional right of way in the historic district many times. See Brian's drive.
In this case, in this case, we would be on thin ice to request additional right of way without paying for it.
Well, I'm just saying, you've done it routinely. I mean, we've asked for, you've asked for right of way and not paid for it. You did it on the streetscape project on Brian, all the way from Alabama Power to damn nearly the stadium.
When the subdivision itself creates the need for additional right of way, we're on pretty good grounds. I gave you the example that came to head was Jackson Hackberry did a renovation of a bathroom in order to do their renovation and do a little addition, had to cross the lot lines, had to come into the subdivision. And we told, we said we could not ask for additional right of way on Hackberry for that subdivision. So that's a good example, very clear where we could not ask for it.
And both for the right of way request, this would have gone on the consent agenda, if you understand what I'm saying? So really, this is, otherwise it would, it conforms with all other subdivision.
That's right.
I have a question. So if per venture, they built something, you said it needed two parking spaces, correct? Could they ask for a variance for those parking spaces at that time?
They could. And then they'd have to go to the zoning board of adjustment for that approval.
The private sanitary sewer easement, is that for the existing residents?
I think, yes.
So they would not be able, if we subdivided this, it would not, this home would not be able to tie into that private sanitary sewer.
That, that's a common condition in downtown.
So that, that private sanitary sewer easement technically is owned by that parcel today. They could have an agreement that would allow the additional lot two to connect to that and it would still be private.
So when you say it'll never be a two-way street, it's drawn as if it were once one. Why do you say it will never be? I understand why they made it one way. I'm asking how do you know what might, might not be needed in the future given that?
Well, you know, obviously, you never know what's going to happen. But this is a thoroughfare through the historic district. And in some of the pictures that we saw, the houses were pushed real close to the right of way.
I'm just saying, I'm saying, but if you don't take the right of way, you can guarantee you'll never have that option.
All right, so we, we take right of way right here. To do a widening project, we'll need right of way all the way back to the east from Queen City Avenue, you know.
Right.
Some elevations on each of them.
If y'all want to require the right of way to be given, then vote that way.
Legally, we would have to pay for this right of way. This is not a situation where state law allows us to force the dedication of right of way without paying for it.
Mr. Woodson, I got a question for you. On this private sanitary sewer we have, I'm assuming is in operation, the private sanitary sewer is working, right? Okay, so when you subdivide this lot, I got two things about from a legal standpoint. One would be legally lot two's ownership of that sanitary sewer easement from that point of the new property line to the street. So now you've got two, you'll have two future property owners potentially that have ownership of a private sanitary sewer.
This is where you need to, if we're to think lot two is ever developed, we have to. Have their own lateral.
Okay.
There used to be a lot of shared laterals, but they do create issues. So we avoid shared laterals. So I don't think they'd be able to create a new shared lateral as a development of lot two.
If I'm a buyer of lot two, I'm going, wait a minute, this is sanitary sewer.
They could use that, future, they could use that easement for their own lateral, but they'd have to, they'd have to separate.
Okay, all right, so then, then my other question was about the access easement of some type, if, if it's impossible to get a driveway and get parking behind lot two off of Seventh, then if we're gonna require off-street parking, right? How, how do they get access to the off-street parking? We don't think we can put a driveway off Seven, or do we think it can be?
If they allow a curb cut, first question is, would, would you allow a curb cut, Mike?
Yeah, we would allow one driveway curb cut.
So the house, they've got a nine-foot minimum building line to the left over here, and if you, if you make the house five feet more narrow, then you'd have, you'd have the, you'd have the access to the rear.
But you, you'd allow one curb cut for two parks if it's a single-family residence, if it's a duplex, you'd have that four parks, correct?
That's correct, yes sir.
Are you saying the rear lot would be a, also be a potential duplex lot, cause it's R four?
Who's gonna own lot two with this, if you do sell, if this was subdivided and you sell Foster, what entity is gonna own lot two? Same group here?
The same.
Same group?
Same.
Y'all would keep ownership of that?
You, you had, we had a couple of people send us letters in favor, one in somewhat in opposition, read, but of the two that I read that were in favor, talk about the project, they discuss the project. And what is, I mean, is there a plan for this? Have y'all shown them plans for this, and they showed it as a project?
We, we, we've done.
Why would they call this project?
I, I don't know, they, we, we've done some, you know, we've looked at the general, um, parking requirements and, and driveway dimensions and seeing how many square feet.
So y'all laid, you've laid something out.
A very, yeah, very rough layout, but.
In the form of a single-family residence or duplex?
I think it was single-family.
And that was what they were referencing as a project?
Is that not? I, I don't know what project they're talking about, to be honest with you, other than that we wanted to subdivide this to protect the neighborhood, I don't.
We never got, it really spent much time.
Designing these homes or anything like that. These people were speaking in favor of this, they kept referencing the project, and so it made me think that there was, that you had shown them something that they could base their decision, is that not the case?
No.
Hadn't shown, hadn't shown weight?
No, if you're talking about me now.
I wasn't talking about you.
Okay. I don't know of anything.
I, I was talking about people since they.
Oh, I see, they email.
Yes, they've been writing, since the project.
You're right.
So, um, okay.
You know, um, I guess in a decade and a half, I, I've never, I've never seen a lot in historic districts subdivided into two, do y'all remember?
I think we have before, I think we have.
Have you seen, what, what's an example of a historic, historic?
Seventh Street, you know, that we had that, um, Mr. Ronald Newton's old home place with the two structures on that, we finally did something with it, didn't we?
There were four lots.
As a condo subdivision.
Oh, there were already four divided, okay, I didn't realize that, I thought it was one big.
They split the lot into two and then did the condo.
You say that, say that the two houses face an eighth street that don't have a backyard on. I love being one of them.
Mr. Fitz, Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
I, I, I believe in property ownership, but I think that y'all have the right to do whatever you want to with your property as long as it's within the guidance of this. But as, as Chairman said, had this been brought any other time by another group, it seems, and, and, and I guess this has been, y'all talked to the historic district and said you're trying to do this to preserve, is that correct?
Yes.
Had anybody else, or somebody else that hadn't talked to the historic district, had just brought this project to us blindly, this room would be full, and we'd be here till ten o'clock here. You gotta understand, from my understanding point, the commission's reluctance or concern about voting to approve this project, when in my professional opinion, anything you put, I mean, I can't see you putting a twenty-foot wide structure on a lot like this. And, hear me out, hear me out, I understand, I understand, and maybe, maybe you can at some point in time, maybe, maybe when we're all gone, that's what needs to go here. But right in the here and now, this is a hard pill for us to swallow, as you can see, that we're, that's why we're questioning, I don't, I don't, I'm, I just, I wanna understand. And maybe if I had the full, if, if I had the full understanding, I could make a better decision. But as I understand it right now, y'all are trying to sell the Foster house, or you're planning on selling the Foster house, you're breaking this lot up under these conditions, which again, it's got, it's got a big, huge, one of the biggest oak trees in Tuscaloosa that I know of on it, you've got a, you've got parking issues you've got to deal with, you've got a sanitary sewer easement, that if you do cut grade down, you gotta worry about the elevation of the grade, oh, by the way, we gotta figure out four parks on site, or two if it's a single-family, and oh, by the way, we still gotta get a sewer lap, there's a lot of issues for us to analyze, is that correct?
Yeah.
I want you to understand my.
Sure, and I'm, you know, and, and that we may not be able to overcome those issues, but, um, we, we, we need, we, we need your approval to, um, to move forward. It, it's, I don't quite know what we do, if, if we.
You can move forward with selling the Foster house.
What do you mean?
I mean, that's your intention is to sell the Foster.
That's right.
Right?
So somebody'd buy it, then they'd add on to it, and we're, and we're, uh.
Your intent would be to get the most return for your investment.
No, that's not why we're doing this.
So, my point, my point is this, is that if you chop off that parcel, then the land's worth less than it would be to have bought the house with all the property.
We're, we're not, we're not looking at that.
So let me, you're doing this so they can't add on to the Foster house?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what this is about?
Yeah.
And you, this.
Hadn't, hadn't, hadn't we been saying that?
I, I'd never heard that.
Oh, come on.
I just, I missed that.
That was the sole intent of the division, is to make it so that.
We need to start over, do our presentation.
Because you could always add in the back of the Foster. Time out, time out, sir, the intent's been told to us is that you're chopping that piece off, protecting, looking to be built on it, that's what we've been sold.
No, the number one thing we're trying to do is to, we don't want somebody to come, buy the whole piece, didn't want somebody to come buy the whole piece of property, and then under the R four zoning, add in addition to it, and have it be a multi-family, um, complex.
And, and it, I, I, sorry, I must have missed that.
Well, it.
I don't know if I've been asleep, I don't think I've been asleep, but if I've ever been re-engaged.
Well, I apologize if I wasn't clear on my.
That's our number one, and, and, and the second lot, we haven't defined it, we didn't buy it so that we could build a structure.
Well, couldn't you just put a, couldn't you just put a deed, put, put, attach a denum to the deed that would just not allow construction on the backside of the lot, that way, not even parking would be, a parking lot couldn't be built, so you couldn't build the multi-family.
Well, I, I don't, can you do that?
I don't know the legality of that.
You can put, you can, you can put, I know you don't love to do it, Zach, but I mean, you can, you can put a, you can change, you're the lawyer, I mean, you can put something on the deed that says, this, the, the.
You can put restrictions.
You can put a deed restriction that won't allow construction on the back bar of the lot, if you can't, then if you can't park the, build a parking lot, then they can't add on to the Foster house to build multiple. So that, that settles that legally, if that's your intent, if your intent is to, is to say, well, you know, we bought this house, but, you know, we wanna have this lot because it may have some value and someone will pay for it, and certainly they will, um, and I disagree, I think you can, I think you can build a twenty-by-twenty house all day long, and so on and about.
Who's gonna staff, who, it, it's hypothetical, all right, so they keep the lot, someone buys it and wants to add on, what's the process for, for that? Who's gonna, where, they gotta go to where, HPC, who else, us?
They would have to go to HPC for approval of the architectural design, um, that's pretty much it, if it's one lot and they're just adding on to it. If they're meeting all the other regulations, setbacks, uh, ground coverage, et cetera.
So the HPC can control whether this project is ever added on to it, correct?
That's right.
They can control the exterior.
Yeah, the design.
But they can't control the occupancy. And that's what we're concerned about.
But you don't, not if you, not if you put a deed restriction on it, cause you have to park it, don't you?
Well, yeah.
You would have to park it if you build something new on lot two.
I'm talking about if you, if you take, if you, if you take the Foster, you can turn it back into multi-family.
It is not.
Know it, well?
And then R four?
Is it, is it?
It's R four, it's, it's zoned for multi-family, its current use is not, or current, the, the recent past use was not multi-family.
One option in this situation is rezoning to R three, it hasn't been used as a multi-family residence for over six months, so it's not grandfathered in as a multi-family residence, and it would have to be a single-family home, otherwise it'd have to go through a couple of other additional processes, it'd have to be a PUD.
We rezone it, to your point, R one, and they've lost their non-conforming use because it hasn't been multi-family for longer than six months, so, so then that, that concern goes away.
Yeah, there may be other ways to do this that we could come up with that we would.
That's what we're discussing.
But, I understand that, but I, you know, we also, this, this is what the owners have come up with that they wanna do, it's within the guidelines, within our regulations, except for the right-of-way, and I, I think secondarily, it's, um, not gonna be.
I mean, so, so wait, lot one is off the, rezone it to R one is off the question anyway, right, because the, of the lot size, right? But we, that's a mute point, right?
Yeah. Lot one?
It's R one.
I think, the owners of this property know, know what is the requirement to build on this lot through HPC. They're very involved in the, in the Historic Preservation Commission and the processes and everything like that, so they're very clear of why the historic districts exist in the first place, is for people like, like them to have protections against their homes. So just keep, I mean, that's, that's why the Historic Preservation Commission exists, is to make sure that the, and also with zoning, with the setbacks and everything like that, there's, there's these pieces in place through zoning and through the Historic Preservation Commission, um, approval process that provide protection for them.
I, I like when we have conversations with owners, I like to understand what the end use, what the end goal is here, and it took, it took, took this body a long time to get, figure out exactly what the end goal was for y'all.
What is it?
Project, I don't, I'm, so, well, I, I, my understanding, the end goal is prevent any addition, they sell the Foster house and prevent any, any changes to the, I guess, exterior footprint, because the interior can be changed, obviously, that's what I'm saying. I, 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 I do say this recommending body has worked with numerous people who've come up with, try to fit them into a mold that would work for us and you. We, we do that somewhat on a regular basis. I think, I think we as a group, we kinda understand who, where we're all at in space here, and I guess my question to you is, do you wanna continue this, or do you wanna try to work with the staff on figuring a way that zoning would work better?
We, we are certainly open to, to trying a different route.
I mean, we, we can vote right now.
I mean, we're, we're not stuck on, we're not stuck on that.
Putting words in Chairman's voice, wow.
Um, if.
Vote right now.
If it's, if it's something that, that you're happy with, I, I think we can, um, work with staff and, um.
Well, that, that would be your, your decision, I mean, I think you hear a whole different, because this, this, this trip up here, we're hearing, we're hearing from you guys, so we got a lot more information. I think you probably got more information from all of those of interest up here, I think we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, we're just kinda going in different ways. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it's, it's where we are, I don't think, I don't, I don't think anything's gonna change anybody's opinion right now, but if, if you feel that it'd be better to continue working with staff, then that's your decision, or you, you can call for the vote, it's completely up to you. I mean, unless there's more questions from the commission, no one did sign up, I, I do need to ask if anybody in the audience cares to speak for or against this petition. We, you didn't sign up, well, you have the opportunity to ask a question or make a comment, if you want to.
And for the record, we did get two letters in support and one letter in opposition.
Which we have those in the record.
That's right.
No one does care to speak, so, gentlemen, I'll leave it up to you guys, if you want us to vote, we're more happy to, if not, we'll let you work with staff.
Yeah, we'll continue it, we'll, we'll work with staff and, and, and try and skin this cat another way.
Just formally ask, you'd like to continue, please?
Um, we'd like to, like to request a continuance.
Thank you very much, all right, commission.
Let me say this, this will be the third run at this we've had, I would seriously like to have staff saying, we all agree, in my opinion, I think that they're in agreement with what y'all are trying to do, if y'all go through this process, so.
Okay.
I mean, it, it would, it had, it helps move this thing along, that we wouldn't be here another hour going back to this.
I think they actually might say that.
Yeah, all right, commission, before us, we have a continuous request of S thirty-six twenty-three, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have it, case continue.
All right, jumping into our cases to be heard, we're starting out with one companion case, it consists of a DROD application as well as a subdivision. Beginning with DROD six twenty-three, Mark and William Thompson, petition to construct four townhomes located at fourteen-ten Twenty-third Avenue. This is zoned BGO and DROD, and it's in Council District Four. Here's the vicinity map, it is just north of Fifteenth Street, right at Fifteenth, Twenty-third, and then Greensboro on the western side. Here's an aerial overview, right near Hope Point Crisis Center, which you all heard a few months back, and here is the site, and another angle, that's Wells Fargo there. This petition is to construct four townhomes, three of them will be three-bedroom, and one of them will be two bedrooms, they will both, they, all four of them will be two stories in height, unit sizing between twelve-hundred and fifteen-hundred square feet each, and they have parking in a shared lot behind the buildings, as well as three on-street bay parking spaces. Each unit will have a front and back door leading to the shared parking area, and it will be gated and managed by an HOA. The building facade will be primarily constructed of brick veneer, and they'll have accents of hardy trim, stucco, and cementous lap siding. Here is a site plan of what those townhomes could and would look like, proposed parking will connect to the existing along the eastern line. The three parking spaces, the three bay parking spaces are along Twenty-third, and then the four townhomes leading to parking in the back. Here are the front elevations, metal roofing, architectural asphalt shingles being shown, hardy trim siding, brick steps leading up to each unit, and the rear elevation, they'll have a metal awning over each rear door, and then continuing with the hardy lap siding. And then here are some elevations of what those could and would look like. Meeting with the Architectural Review Committee, they found that overall this does conform to the DROD standards and guidelines in section twenty-four-two thirty. Any questions specifically on the DROD case before we jump to the subdivision? All right, we've got S sixty-three twenty-three, this is the High Tide Townhomes, a resurvey of part of lot four ninety-seven of the original city survey, it's consisting of four townhome lots and one common space on approximately point-two acres, again, located at fourteen-ten Twenty-third Avenue in Council District Four. We are still in the same space, and here is that plot that we just looked at previously, creating the four townhome lots, creating a common area in the back, and they're requesting a variance from lot configuration for that common space. Any questions for staff? Yep. So, the common area will be creating a flag lot. It'll be along that.
So, we have no, it's not an engineering issue, it's more of a zoning issue?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's, we see that a lot with townhomes.
Fair enough. Any questions for staff? Petitioner?
Good evening, commission. Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates, representing the Thompson brothers, who are here with me tonight, as well as Lee Alexander, who's doing the architectural work on this project. Our staff pretty much covered everything content-wise. We'll answer any questions you have.
The same group finishing up ones adjacent to it?
Different group, same block.
Same block.
So, the ivory that's south of the Wells Fargo driveway?
Yeah.
Was finished last month. The white buildings, thirteen units there.
You said same lot, then?
No, same block.
Block. Okay, I thought so. No, it's same lot, okay. Yeah.
The one in the background.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. What's, what's the floor plans again? What's the layout, three-two, two-two?
All of them are three-bedrooms.
All three? All upstairs?
They are. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. They were in Arizona, but.
Yeah. I, I think, I think you're right.
I'm pretty sure the skinny lot one is the two-bedroom.
That's right. That's correct.
We might just be tired of asking questions, Duncan. You might get lucky.
It's fine with me. I don't want to stand here for an hour and ten minutes.
Good placement, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, I think this, I mean, I love that we're doing things like this, all in this area. Because I think it just makes it more of a livable downtown, and architecture, they've all looked really nice. I mean, even the one that's, that we had a little question about, by the hair salon, they just looked great. They sold like they were sold.
I mean, if you look at a, a three-block, kind of centered around the post office, out to Greensboro, back to Queen City, Twenty-first, south to Fifteenth Street, I mean, it's, it's changed the look of this whole area.
It is.
I agree.
I'm impressed with it. Looks good.
Any other questions for petitioner?
You're not going to paint the brick?
No, sir.
Uh, anyone sign for or against? Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition?
Thank you.
All right, commission. Before us, we have two cases. We have a DROD oh-six-twenty-three, Mark and William Thompson, petition to construct four townhomes. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Commission reports for S sixty-three twenty-three, High Tide Townhomes. One, one variance request, lot configuration, staff has no issues with, and have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right. Next up, we have commission, or companion case B. It'll consist of an annexation, rezoning, and subdivision, and we will begin with the subdivision. It is S fifty-four twenty-three, Patriot Parkway Commercial Subdivision, and it is consisting of four lots on approximately twenty-point-four-two acres. It's located at the northeast corner of Patriot Parkway and Highway sixty-nine South. It's currently not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map, right at Patriot Parkway and sixty-nine South. There's a Walgreens on the corner, and also Tractor Supply Plus along the southern side of Patriot. Here's an aerial overview, and here's the plot with contours and without. So, again, this is a four-lot subdivision, creating three smaller lots that are facing Highway sixty-nine South, and then leaving lot four roughly around sixteen acres. They're also showing an access easement running through here, because Aldot, I believe, permitted them to have one turnout off of sixty-nine South, which would turn into what is proposed to be lot one. So, they are providing access to the others, and they are requesting a variance from sidewalks along Patriot Parkway.
Stop there. Engineering on the variance request, that's going to be an Aldot issue, right?
Well, the component on sixty-nine would be, but then, uh, their, their request is actually specific to Patriot Parkway.
So, they're not, Aldot will approve the turnout, but they're not going to do it. They're going to use Patriot Parkway. They give one turnout?
Okay, so, the, the variance request is about sidewalks, but, um.
My, my bad. I made a comment about Aldot. So, you're okay with sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there not sidewalks on Patriot now?
There is up around the school, up to, about to the Remington subdivision entrance. But there's none on the commercial side down here close to sixty-nine.
So, what I heard was Aldot is going to allow them one turnout on the sixty-nine?
Yes, they're allowed to have one right in and right out. Uh, the, the, the diagram that we were shown is, they pushed it all the way to the north, getting as far away from the intersection as they could, uh, right in and right out on lot one.
So, are they going to do that? Not shown.
They are going to do that. It's not really a component of this subdivision, though.
And the other two lots will access off of Patriot Parkway?
They'll access off of that easement, uh, to the rear of those proposed lots. Yep.
All right. And then the second part of this companion case is an annexation. So, this is to annex approximately four-point-four-seven acres located in the same area. We'll be looking at lots one through three from that subdivision. So, again, vicinity and aerial map showing where we are, and then we'll be focusing on lots one, two, and three along sixty-nine South that they will be requesting to annex in. So, they'll be leaving lot four within the county, and then requesting to annex in roughly five acres along sixty-nine South.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
About that? All right. I speak really, all right, lots one through three are, my calculations are four-point-one-one acres. This is saying four-point-four-seven. What's the other point-three-six?
It's a good question. I'm assuming that those numbers came prior to them adding that fifty-foot access easement. I think once they sent in revised plans, that probably shortened the acreage a little bit for lots one through three.
You think we're only annexing four-point-one-one, then?
So, the, this is the most up-to-date plan. This came post, after the legal notice, so that the acreage will be slightly off, but the deed will be correct.
That's why we put approximate.
Okay.
All approximate.
Check my math skills, man.
No, it's good checking.
Thank you.
All right. And then this is the property. This is Patriot Parkway. You're standing there. You're up in the air a little bit higher than just standing, but, and then there's the intersection with sixty-nine South and Patriot Parkway, and then you see Walgreens there. And then this request is to annex in for access to city utilities, and this is outlined as a primary expansion area. Talking with other city departments, there were no issues with this request. Environmental Services did state that no services will be provided for this area. And then jumping into the last piece of this companion case, we have Z eighteen twenty-three. So, they would like to rezone those approximate, what was the acreage?
Four-point-one-one.
Four-point-one-one acres. They'd like to rezone that from R one to BN if annexed in. So, again, here we are in the world, and this is just showing the existing zoning. So, they're surrounded. The parts that are within city limits near them, that they're adjacent to, are zoned BN. That's the zone that they're requesting to go to, and again, for those three lots.
Why is that small strip aren't in zone BN?
It's a great question. Jimbo?
Yeah, where is it?
Yeah, a small strip along the street.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Our tiny BN piece that we have to the northern portion.
I believe it was to allow the annexation of the southern BN portion, which I think is Tractor Supply.
Southern or the, or the west? We did something one time with the, across the street, across the interstate. However, it's.
Man, the city was across the street.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was a little dirty.
It's going to be a Walmart.
All right.
Eddie, you did that.
Don't do that Parkway. Get that pay a bunch of money.
I remember.
All right. And then this rezoning does conform to framework. Framework, framework identified this as corridor commercial, and their intent is to develop this commercially. And here's the future land use character map, showing where we are and the surrounding future land uses. And here are all the permitted uses within BN. Any questions for staff?
Can you go back to the aerial view?
Yes.
Just wanted, little bit more, right there. I just, I just, I'm going to vote for this. I'm just going to tell you right up front. The problem I have is, we always tell people they ain't got to build sidewalks, and then my experience on the council, about five or six years from now, they'll come back and say, city needs to build us some sidewalks. And we always say, oh, don't build sidewalks. Well, you're going to come from Hillcrest High School. Kids are going to walk down here. It's going to be a McDonald's or something like that, and there's not going to be any sidewalks, because we told them they didn't have to build them, but then everybody's going to look at us or the city to build sidewalks. You don't have to build them until they develop the property, I'm guessing, do they? So, I, I just, I always have wondering about, oh, no, don't build the sidewalks. The city will do it ten years from now when Ms. Howard's the council president, and she's got plenty of money.
Are you saying ask for the sidewalk?
I, I just don't know why this, this is, goes back, and, and I thought it would show it. If you go back a little bit further to the right, I know there's sidewalks down in front of Hillcrest High School. I'm not sure how far down that way they come, but.
No, that's a good point, Mr. Pugh, and I would say, for this case specifically, why we're okay with waiving the sidewalk waiver, or why planning, you know, gave a seal to say we support it, I guess. Um, the three lots that are being proposed to be brought into city limits are primarily, it's my understanding, they'll function by facing sixty-nine South, leaving about sixteen acres of undeveloped property remaining in the county. Um, so, it's hard to say what their plans are with that. They didn't have any development plans, so we didn't feel it was right to hold them to building out the sidewalks, but I definitely hear your point.
Well, they just, I think they just asked permission not to build sidewalks on Patriot Parkway.
Mr. Chairman, do you remember one year we passed a policy that if you were a certain distance from a school or a park, you had to do it? In other words, it took away our, kind of took away our right. Does that pertain to this? I mean, I don't.
I don't know how far we are. That's why they have to ask for the sidewalk variance.
I think we've kind of come to realization in the real world is that you have a lot of places that would not have sidewalks, and basically you're building sidewalks to nowhere.
But I want to say it was a quarter of a mile. You know, we have no flexibility within a quarter of a mile. I don't know if we're within a quarter.
Yep, it's within half a mile. That's right.
It was a half mile?
It's within half a mile, and it's also off of the street classification. So, I believe here Patriot Parkway definitely triggered the sidewalk variance because of the street classification, but I also believe it is within half a mile of the school as well.
Do we have any, I mean, well, maybe this is a question for the petitioner, but.
That's possible.
What's, what's coming here? I mean, obviously, they've got subdivided three lots, and maybe some have some plans. And Mr. Pugh's point, you know, if it's a McDonald's or, you know, some type of food establishment that kids are going to gravitate to, they're going to need a place to get, how to get there, because all of them can't drive.
Definitely, yeah. And I'll let them speak to that.
Another county don't want sidewalks.
Those would be the city.
We don't want several months ago.
We can't require, we, we can only require sidewalks on the part we're annexing, correct?
Yeah.
We're not going to be able, we're not going to undevelop land. We're not going to put sidewalks.
Yeah, one of the things that you might want to consider, um, if, if you, if you vote to deny the sidewalk request tonight, then that's a condition of the subdivision, and the sidewalk would have to be installed before they can plat the lots and sell them to whoever the future developers are. You could say that you want a condition that as the lots on Patriot Parkway develop, that sidewalk be a condition of LDP approval. That way, the, the southern lot, I can't remember whether it's lot, I think it's lot three, that's on Patriot Parkway. When our office receives a land development permit request to develop, it would have to show sidewalks along Patriot Parkway to the termination of that lot.
What's the length of that lot on Patriot?
I want to say it's two, two-hundred-and-fifty or sixty feet, something like that.
Well, I just want to know, because I mean, obviously, the developers are going like, he's thinking his mind, okay, I got it built. How many, in your feet of?
Yeah, and any, you know, right now, they're not wanting to annex lot four. But if, if, if land, if, if lot four is going to be used for commercial use, it has to annex to connect to the sewer. Has to annex to connect for commercial use.
Well, you definitely don't want to build them until they develop them, because trucks will just tear them up, running over them.
Agree.
Going on.
He knows what's going to go there. It's going to be a neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. Chase Lucas with TTL thirty-five sixteen Greensboro Avenue. Uh, I don't really have anything to add to that right this moment. I'll answer any questions. And Brian Harris is also here to answer any questions about the actual development and potential, uh, you know, commercial that may come there, so.
And the sidewalk issue, what is yours?
Sidewalk's not an issue. The developer's willing to do it on, you know, the two-hundred-and-sixty feet.
Of lot three?
Lot three, so.
Okay.
Even better. Anything else the developer wants to add, or you want to add?
Uh, not unless you have any questions. If you've got some for him, he'd be glad to step up and.
Any questions from commissioners? Is, is there defined use yet for those parcels, or?
I, I'll let him.
I mean, you see our point about the sidewalks, Mr. Pugh's point.
Sure thing. And we were discussing that while y'all were discussing. I think there was some miscommunication inside of our team. We certainly don't have an issue building anything along Patriot Parkway for that two-hundred, call it, you know, sixty-three, sixty-five, whatever that linear footage is there. Um, there'll be sidewalks, to Haley's point, to nowhere for a little while. We don't have any issue requiring those, certainly, if, uh, uh, an LDP for that lot, if it'll be required then, rather than at the point in time, you know, we subdivide the property, we'd rather not go build a sidewalk and then, you know, have to wait a little while.
Then after staff, what, what's the width of a sidewalk on, uh, this is a lot of four-lane? Do we require a little bit, four foot is the minimum?
Four feet is our minimum.
I mean, I think four feet in some areas is too narrow. It looks really kind of not functional. You start getting a lot of people walking there, biking there, and you almost need six. But that's, I mean, has there ever been any thought to that from a staff standpoint, or?
So, I would, I would make a rec, a suggestion that, um, if we, if we wanted to increase the width of the sidewalk from the minimum standard of four feet, you know, you know, maybe six becomes the limitation of width. When you get larger than that, and then it, it's kind of interpreted as a shared-use path, and which, you know, you need to set up a stripe in it to segregate, you know, pedestrian and bicycle traffic.
Well, I would just say, almost like we have the street classifications. I mean, that, that right there is a, obviously, a pretty heavy trafficked area. Therefore, means a lot of people in the area, and.
We can take a look at that in the sub.
I mean, I don't get to beat y'all to all.
The subdivision regulations updates. We can talk about that for sure.
Well, I appreciate the developer being so quick to say he saw the concern about the sidewalk and be willing to, um, build those, so.
And Mr. Pugh?
Mr. Pugh, yeah.
Well, I, like I said, I'm, I'm glad you're coming into the city, and I appreciate you developing this. Ms. Howard and I have looked at this a long time, I know, and there's a large neighborhood across the street as you go down from this, and as this develops, if you have sidewalks, I believe it'll just make it to where, it'll just be a quality of life and improve your property value.
I agree.
Any other questions for developer and petitioner? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't think anyone has signed up for or against. Would anyone care to speak for or against these petition requests? Having heard none. Commission, let's take the annexation first. We have annexation fourteen-twenty-three, annexing four-point, like, point-four-one-one acres to the city of Tuscaloosa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the city. Next case, we will take, going to take Z eighteen, staff? All right, Z eighteen twenty-three, request to rezone from R one to BN. You'll have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. We have before us S fifty-four twenty-three. This is the one that has the variance request, which the petitioner has withdrawn that variance request, and will build sidewalks. That is case S fifty-four twenty-three, Patriot Parkway Commercial Subdivision. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right. Last companion case of the evening. We'll have a rezoning as well as a subdivision. Starting with the rezoning, we have Z seventeen twenty-three. Mike Hicks petitions to rezone approximately half an acre located at four-oh-five Fifteenth Street from. from BNS and R four to BN. This is in Council District Two. Here is the vicinity map. It is currently the T-Town Tire along fifteenth, right next to Domino's. And here's an aerial view of the property. There are currently three lots there. This is the existing zoning map, so the light blue is BNS, and then the orange-yellow is R four. So they are split currently. And then this is the site. And another view, this is from Fourth Avenue, looking on. This is standing in the alley. And another photo down the alley. The alley is a one-way. And to the west, you have Domino's. And to the south, you have R four residential property. Uh, this request is to rezone to BN to allow for a uniform zone, and also for the development of a drive-through coffee shop. And here is a schematic site plan showing what that could and would look like. So they'll have two access points off of Fourth, I'm sorry, they'll have one access point off of Fourth Avenue, entering from the northeastern, where you see two arrows, entering through here. And they will come in, circled down and around, and back out here. Or they could come in and keep going and take a left turn out down the one-way alley. They're showing sidewalks along fifteenth that will remain, and they are also showing sidewalks along Fourth Avenue.
On the Fourth Ave, I'm sorry, can you stay there one second? On the, um, exit side?
Mm-hmm.
Not the alley, but the other. Is there a cross cut across fifteenth up there? You don't see, you don't see what I'm saying right? If you came out, could you go back to fifteenth and turn?
Turn, turn west.
Oh, yes, yep.
You could?
I believe so, is that right? Yeah, you can turn left.
Do we have to go right?
You can turn left out.
While you're there, Mike, the fifteen-foot on the exit side, so they've got parking at the top. There's a lot of wasted space in there, twelve and fifteen foot, that twelve-foot drive, what is that for?
So the twelve-foot drive is gonna be a pass-through if a car needs to leave without going through the drive-through. And that fifteen feet is, I think is the required buffer on the south side.
No, no, no parking?
No, no parking, that's correct. And I, I, let's go ahead and address the sidewalk waiver request. Uh, as you'll know, the schematic shows sidewalk being added on Fourth, and that'll be a condition of the LDP. This, this waiver request just allows them to plat that lot without having to build that sidewalk first, and then tear it up during construction.
Looking at framework, this does conform to Framework's plan. Framework identified this as corridor commercial. And then here's that future land use character map showing that. And all of the permitted uses within BN. Then the part two to this case, there is a subdivision involved. It's S sixty twenty-three. This is the resurvey of lots twelve, thirteen, and a part of lot fourteen and block six of University Place. And it is to consolidate into one lot for this commercial development. We are still in the same place, and here is that plat. So we'll be removing two interior lines. This aerial image doesn't show, but there's a third line running through roughly that area. So they're requesting to remove all three to consolidate into one for the development we just looked at. And as Mike's just stated, they are requesting a waiver from sid, or, sorry, they are requesting a variance from sidewalks. However, once they develop, they will build out along Fourth.
Engineering has got that all worked out. Anyone have, uh, conflict of interest here? I know, I know. I just knew that you were pointing property, or I at least had to ask.
Mike Hicks with Herndon Hicks Associates, here on behalf of the developer. I think they pretty much covered everything. This is a proposed Starbucks, drive-through only, no inside seating. They'll be, they'll have a walk-up window and some patio seating, but no, uh, no indoor seating. It's, uh, supposed to relieve the store that's to the east of McFarlane, which needs some relief.
Is that, that alleyway, that's obviously still city-owned, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
What's the condition of that, from the point that, say fifteenth to wherever these cars would be, have to come out and go south on that? Where do they, what's the condition of that alleyway?
So the, the alleyway is a one-way directional south.
Going how far to where?
So it goes down to six, to sixteenth Street.
Okay.
And so, any vehicles that choose to exit onto the alley, come to sixteen, and then if they, they turn right, go to Hackberry, then they have access. And then if they turn left, they'll go two blocks to Second Avenue, to the, to the signal there. Second and fifteenth would be the logical choices.
That's great. That gives them two, two lights to access to get headed west on the scene, or going across the campus, okay?
That's right.
All right.
Let me check, show me, go back to the plan, plan B, the world B, like... Your dumpsters, some area, what's going on there?
Well, that's, that's, uh, it appears as though the dumpster's in the alley. That's just an apron. Uh, the, the dumpster itself will be east of that concrete pattern that enclosed that open area there. So the dumpster...
I thought you said, would you angle it differently, when you angle it towards fifteen?
Well, we've, 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 we have discussed that, or sent a comment, and, and Stephen's exactly right. With the narrowness of that alley and it being a one-way, if the, if the plan is to access that dumpster from the alley, it will have to be reconfigured in the LDP process for approval.
Yeah, we can rotate that, I believe we got room to do that.
Care to have the, the land to deal with, so...
Yeah, we can do that in the LDP.
Any other questions for Mr. Hicks? Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against? Okay, I think this is a for improvement, T-Town Tire, no offense to...
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Tire industry, but, uh...
I'm happy to see this, uh, this coming to existence.
How about the... He says, "Do you have a contract, do you have a way to benefit?" I'm not doing property next door, and I don't think I benefit. I'm just saying, I, but I do have a question. I didn't know it was coming up, honestly. Uh, how just, how tall is the wall?
It's, it's gotta be a six-foot, um, fully opaque.
How about a, how about a, how about a knockdown, ask them to be a little taller since it's a dumpster right now? Six feet isn't very tall when you gotta, you know, funding residence, residence. I'm not, I don't, listen, I'm all about progress. I think it's something, good business is good.
What are the kind of buffers there? I mean, you say, we say buffers, are there gonna be any kind of vegetation there, or any trees or something?
Yeah, I mean, there will be. It's the, it's really that, um, hardy board screen wall is the requirement.
So the wall, then there'll be a fifteen-foot buffer there of...
That's, you can...
Too much to ask them in the way, and I can see the dumpster, it sits, I don't see the door.
You, you can ask them privately, but as far as the subdivision regulations go, that's not part of this process.
It's part, it's drawn in this plan.
That's just to show you what they're gonna build in the future, but they don't even have to do that. Nothing requiring the dumpster to be screened or covered or something?
There's neither, it is. You shaking your head?
There is, there'll be a screening around.
Enclosure?
Dumpster enclosure.
I'm like Mr. Rumsey, I don't know what's behind that, it's like... That's in the zoning, it's not part of the sub, they're just erasing lot lines.
So, so we'll talk about the different...
So, so what material, what material does the, uh, the dumpster enclosure have to be?
Uh, similar material to the building.
So, is that gonna be brick, I think it was a brick building?
I'm not sure.
I mean, I don't wanna see a wood fence up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Dog ear fence, I think it'll be knocked over, I mean...
It wouldn't be a wooden fence.
Talking something...
It might be similar to hardy board or something similar to that, concrete block, yeah. But just like, um, Mr. Woodson said, this is just a conceptual site plan. They're not held to this in their approval.
All right. Any other questions for staff from the commission? Having heard none. We have before us commission, we have Z seventeen twenty-three. Mike Hicks petition to rezone BNS and R four to BN. You'll have a motion in a second.
Motion approved.
Mr. Rumsey?
I'm gonna stand this.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Mission S sixty twenty-three, resurvey of lots twelve and thirteen. Varyance sidewalk cross requests, variance sidewalks. However, we know that that's not part of the LDP when they actually get into that phase, so the variance is approved by, or agreed upon by staff. You have a motion for S sixty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, getting into our preliminary plats for the evening, we'll start with S fifty-six twenty-three. This is Fifth Street subdivision, a resurvey of lot one thirty-five of the original city survey. It's consisting of four townhome lots and two residential lots on approximately one point three four acres. And it's located at thirty-fourteen Fifth Street. This is in Council District One. Here's the vicinity map. It is just west of Capital Park, across the railroad tracks. And here's an aerial view, it's along MLK and, as well as Fifth Street, uh, Fourth to the north, and Thirtieth borders it on the east. This is the site we'll be looking at, and here is the plat with contours and without. Again, this is a six-lot subdivision, uh, creating four townhome lots. And here is the plat with some improvements, showing where the driveway access will be. Zooming into those four townhome lots on the right-hand side of your screen, all four are going to face MLK, and then they'll access off of Fifth Street, giving an easement for all four lots to have access with two off-street spaces, parking spaces, per townhome lot. And then cut out portionally, you'll see lot five on the right, coming in at point three acres. No plans for development at this time. And then you may also see on your screen the varying right-of-way width. You'll see existing versus proposed. We're not paying attention to that this evening. This plat, if approved, we ask that it's approved contingent on a successful street vacation. It's my understanding, at this time, they do plan to come later with a street vacation request to match closer to what this proposed right-of-way is that they have shown. And then the northern lot, lot six, closer to an acre, again with varying right-of-way widths. And then they're requesting a variance from sidewalks, as well as half-street improvements. They have a note stating that sidewalks and half-street improvements will be required on lots five and six if and when developed. Any questions for staff? All right.
Petitioner?
Chase Lucas with TTL thirty-five sixteen Greensboro Avenue. Thanks, Haley. I don't really have anything else to add to that. Be glad to answer any more questions. And we've also got developer here to answer any questions as well.
Yeah, is that, is that a sidewalk on the other side of MLK from where these townhomes are?
My, my, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The, or the little dots?
There is no proposed sidewalk on MLK.
We didn't put sidewalks in when we made all those improvements?
All right, so this phase, the, the, the part of MLK that he's depicting is a part of the next phase or Phase Three. I asked that they superimpose what the plan shows on this map so we could see what it would eventually look like. The shared use path, the wide sidewalk, is on the west side of MLK. You can just see a little bit of it, and then the, the five-foot sidewalk is on the eastern side adjacent to this development.
Five foot? Four.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say for sure which that is.
Is the city do, is the city doing that?
Yes.
City doing that? I get the shared use because it's bikes and all that, that's definitely a shared use.
That's right, yes.
I'm surprised by the five foot on the other side.
Correct.
Correct.
So I guess...
Is that something, is that a policy change? I mean, they, they're not, yeah, they're putting their sidewalk... Their sidewalks are going in here.
He's putting it in for what he built.
Yeah, yeah, there's gonna be, there'll be sidewalks on all sides of this development, either by the, the MLK project or the developer on Fifth Street.
Right.
Yes.
Just, we just don't have a, we're gonna do four townhomes?
That's correct.
We don't have any renderings yet of those, or...
No, not at this moment, um, no, sir.
Need improvement over what's there now?
I get it, I'm curious what the product is, what the market is. Any other questions for petition? Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S fifty-six twenty-three, the Fifth Street subdivision. You've variance requests, which engineering has laid out for us, has no current issues with. You have a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, next we have S fifty-seven twenty-three. This is Homewood Townhomes, a resurvey of lots seventeen and eighteen, block one oh five, Homewood number two. This is consisting of three townhome lots on approximately point three four acres, and it's located at nine oh six and nine oh eight Homewood Drive in Council District Four. Here's the vicinity map. Got Hackberry to the east, Paul Bryant, right in between Paul Bryant and fifteenth Street, just south of thirteenth Street. And then here is the aerial overview, two lots today. I believe there's a total of thirteen beds between both lots currently. And then here is the plat with contours and without. So the petition here is to create three townhome lots, all totaling with five bedrooms each for a total of fifteen beds. And they have parking in the rear. And they're requesting a variance from lot configuration. So the properties that are on-site today will be no longer, this will be to construct three new townhomes.
Any questions for staff?
And then the lot configuration is for the way that these lots are kinda angling out. It's an odd lot to work with, so...
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, Al Cavanaugh with Cavanaugh's Engineering representing Beau Harris. So two existing rental units, Beau's gonna demo, and then we'll build three new townhomes here. Big night for townhomes here, I guess, for y'all. The, the only variance is that lot configuration. The lot line obviously has to come down the firewall, and then it has to turn so I can meet the twenty-foot drainage. So it just has to, they have to break that way, so... That's the only, that's the only variance, and that's why. But, pretty straightforward, other than that, uh, you can see the storm sewer system on there, this, uh, this proposed. There's an existing city drainage structure, actually leaves through here, that they will be tying into. We'll be doing some reconstruction of an old projection box there. Something Mike's very familiar with. We ran into that on the development to the north, so we've kinda dealt with that one a little bit. But, other than, if there's any questions, other than that, it's just a, you know, straight...
Pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Straight townhomes.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S-5723, Homewood Townhomes, with one variance request of lot configuration. Engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, Commission. Next, we have S-5823. This is the resurvey of Lot Four, Forest Lake Subdivision Number Two. It's consisting of one lot on approximately 0.33 acres, located at 1609 Lake Avenue. This is in Council District Two. Here's the vicinity map. It is right on the lake, right on Forest Lake, just south of 15th Street. And here's an aerial overview. And here's that plat with contours and without. This dashed line here is the existing lot line that they're proposing to remove to consolidate into one lot. And they are requesting a variance from sidewalks, and there is currently that shared-use path just directly across the street from this site. Any questions for staff?
Thank you. Petitioner?
Jamie Autry, 1470 North Bank Parkway, Tuscaloosa. Haley pretty much covered everything. The only two things I'd like to add is the structure that you see left on the lot, on the aerial. That's what's left over from when the tornado came through. So, the family is just trying to consolidate this into one lot to rebuild. There's a sidewalk variance, but like she said, across the street is the shared-use path. And even though it's a weird configuration, there's still about 3,500 square feet of buildable area, and that existing home was able to fit inside those easements with no issues.
Questions for petitioner? I'd love to see a house built there.
Oh, yeah. Clean it up.
All right. Commission, before us, we have, what are we on now? We're on S-5823, resurvey of Lot Four, Forest Lake Subdivision Number Two. One variance request sidewalks, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Next, we have S-6123. This is the resurvey of lots 15 and 16, block B, Jack Johnson Heights. It's consisting of one lot on approximately .34 acres, and it's located at 2101 Fourth Street East in Council District Five. So, we are just north of JC Park in Alberta. Looking at these two lots highlighted in red. Here's the plat with contours and without. This is to remove that interior lot line to create one larger lot. They're requesting variances from sidewalks, half-street improvements, and additional right-of-way.
Engineering, all those variance requests?
We're okay with those requests.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mike Hicks, Hernan Hicks Associates, here on behalf of the owner. This owner wants to add a bedroom to his house on the southeast corner, and just needs to get rid of that lot line.
Fair enough. Any questions for petitioner? Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none. Commission, S-6123, resurvey of Lot 15, 16, block B, Jack Johnson Heights. All three variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, last preliminary plat of the evening is S-6423. This is Peak Family Subdivision Number Two, a resurvey of Lot One, Peak Family Subdivision. It's consisting of three lots on approximately 12 and a half acres, located directly west of 17104 North Hagler Road. This is not in city limits. So, we are way on up the lake, past the Sailing Club. And here's an aerial overview of the property. Currently, one lot. Here's that plat with contours and without. So, they're requesting to go from one lot to three. Each lot is about 4.15 acres. And they are requesting variances from capped sewer, drainage study, half-street improvements, lot configuration, as well as sidewalks.
Engineering?
We're okay with those requests in this area.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marty Montgomery, Montgomery Lincoln Land Surveying, uh, representing the owners of this, uh, 12.5-acre subdivision. It's just consisting of three lots, re-subdiving the, an existing lot.
Assuming that's the Peak Family?
I don't know who that is. Last people here.
I mean, pretty straightforward. Any questions for petitioner? Having heard none. Thank, anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none. Bring back up the variance request, please. We have, before us, Commission, S-6423, Peak Family Subdivision. Five variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion approved.
All right, Commission. Next up, we do have three annexation requests, and for presentation purposes, I'd like to do all three at once. It's all tied to the same petitioner, and I think it would flow a little bit easier. So, we have AN-1523. This is to annex approximately five acres located at 3,200 McWright's Ferry Road. Here is the vicinity map, as well as the existing city limits hashed in the red with a little bit of yellow tint to it, along the Black Warrior River. And here is an aerial overview of the property. And this request is to annex in for access to city schools. This is a primary expansion area outlined in framework and meeting, and asking all city departments. There were no issues with this request. However, no services can be provided due to this being a private drive, and OCE stated that no infrastructure can be extended. Jumping right into the next one, this is annexing approximately one acre located at 3,107 McWright's Ferry Road. Here is that piece. I went a little out of order. The last one probably should've gone second, but that's okay. They'll all touch and all connect to city limits. Here's the aerial overview. So, we just looked at this property. This one is coming next, and we're looking at this one. This site specifically, I believe, is the home to annex in for city schools. And it also is primary expansion, and same comments from city departments, no issues and no services will be provided from ESD. And then, the last annexation is to annex in three acres at 3,101 McWright's Ferry Road. There's that other piece that will connect to all three. So, they'd like to annex in one to get to two, to get to three, which is where they're able to access for city schools.
That's a great question. Mr. Hughes got an observation.
Yeah.
Bring that back up. We just brought it up there.
On, the three lots that are being brought into the city?
Yes.
It's the, the red that's outlined here, the one to the left will be at the top. The one in the middle's not being brought in, right?
That's right.
The driveway going through that property, and it not being in the city when it comes to our zoning and all that junk, is that protected anyway? Because the driveway ain't on the property, or what? I don't know.
So, all those drives are private, and that's what ESD has pointed out, that they're not gonna provide any services. You know, there's, none of that is public right-of-way. It's been that way, you know, however they divided that property up years ago. These are private drives to be worked out amongst those, those landowners, which are all the same family.
I'm, I'm glad they...
So, you're not city-maintained?
No, none of it is city-maintained.
I'm glad they're coming in the city. I've seen them from the bridge, and I always wondered who was lucky enough to live there.
Okay, yo, I was gonna ask. We can see those when we go over the bridge, can't we? Yeah.
I've always...
I just love that little area over there. Yeah, yeah.
All right, and then just clicking through the rest, all three of these properties are primary expansion areas, and there were no further issues. All right?
Thank you. All right.
I've gotta ask.
I would say, this has gotta be the petitioner's, right? Y'all wanna be in the city of Tuscaloosa? Okay. I get it. I get it.
I, I, I will say that the young ladies have been very well behaved to sit through this, what they got to this board. I've been watching them, and...
They can go back and say they, they saw their civics in action today. All right, we're not gonna ask you to come up and say anything. We know why you're here. We're glad to have you in the city. All right, Mission, we've got three annexations. First is Annexation 1523. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the city. Annexation 1623, do I have a motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes, haven't? Welcome to the city. Annexation 1723, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, opposed? Welcome to the city. Thank you.
Take those girls and get them a pizza.
Take, take us too, though.
All right, Commission. We have one more thing.
Yeah, one more thing.
All right. Uh, last month, you all were introduced to some updates that we wanted to make to our subdivision regulations, so now it is back before you all to vote and adopt. Clicking through those quickly, um, the pages and sections that we'll be updating, words and terms defined, Pre-Design Conference, final plat procedures...
Ms. Webb, did anything change since we discussed this last time?
No changes. No changes.
Thank you very much.
We can just click through them, then. And we had no public input on either, or on any of these, so...
All right.
Nothing left to discuss.
All right. Do I have a motion? All, all those in favor of adopting those amendments, changes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Great. All right, that's the meeting.
Any turn.